One they have right now? I mean, just because it's really hard to...
Good evening. We'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting for April the fourteenth for the Beelton City Council. If you will all please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Linda. If you will please call the roll.
Councilmember Connolly.
Here.
Councilmember Elevitz.
Here.
Councilmember Sierra.
Here.
Vice Mayor Baumann.
Here.
And Mayor Andrewsick.
Here. Thank you. At this time, we will... Do we have any requests for reordering of the agenda?
No.
All right. This time, we will enter into the public comments. I have some speaker slips, but I wish to make sure everyone understands. Any person may address the council on any subject pertaining to the city business, including all items on the agenda not listed as public hearing, including the consent agenda and closed session. The limit is three minutes per speaker. By law, no action may be taken, and this council will not take any action on public comments. With that, I believe I have Kathy Vreeland.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Beelton Visitors Bureau, we had submitted a letter via email, I believe, to council and staff, but just board requested I read it into the record. Dear Honorable Mayor and council members, the Beelton Visitors Bureau is exploring the concept of public art displays within the city of Beelton. We realize this was a goal from the visioning process and a way to enhance our community through visual art display. We have explored various locations where public art could be displayed and have reached out to private landowners in some case to obtain their approval. Some areas of interest are at Riverview Park, Avenue of Flags, and in the Albertson's Shopping Center. Each of these locations would need to be retrofitted to accommodate such art pieces in order to secure light and position the artwork so it may be seen. We have explored the various means of acquiring the artwork for display, which includes purchasing the artwork outright, in which case it would become permanent, or artists may be commissioned to display their work for a period of time. Fees are normally charged, and insurance would be required to cover any damage that may occur to the artwork. Interchangeable plaques could accompany the artwork and would tell a little bit more about the artist and the piece of art that's being displayed. We have a local artist who is willing to help us get started. He has offered a piece of his work free of charge to place at Riverview Park. We would need to discuss the location, build a base to fix it to, and provide lighting. The Visitors Bureau is willing to partner with the city to begin this project, and we understand this will be an ongoing project as the community grows and takes shape. Our purpose of this concept letter is to gain council's approval to move forward with the discussion and begin the process for attracting and displaying public art. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. We look forward to exploring this concept with you and working to enhance our community through public art. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Kathy. Yes, Mr. President.
We didn't... I did not receive that copy of that letter via email, and I'm not sure if the council has either. When did it come out?
It's been a little while ago. This was...
Were there drafts in such...
I sent something, but I... Well, I can resend it then.
Please send it.
Yep, I sure will.
Thank you.
Yep, I sure will.
Thank you, Kathy. Industrial Lighting, Public Comment, Finn Rung.
Pardon?
Hello, Finn.
Hello. Sorry. I'm sorry I didn't make last meeting. The lighting on Industrial Way, $400,000, was started, from what I remember, two years ago, expected to be completed in two years. That's four years, and it was my understanding that you didn't really know what was going on, what it was going to look like, and when it was going to be finished, and how much it was going to cost. Most likely, it's going to go up to a half a million. At $400,000, it is $22,000 per light. At a half a million, like it will be, it will be $100 per person in this city, man, woman, and child. And there was only one contractor mentioned, PG&E, I think. Why wasn't there three bids? That's what needs to be found out. I mean, money is nice to have, but it's worth to spend it. I mean, I don't go to industrial all that often. I don't want to pay $100 necessarily. And also, the lighting cost, whatever you decide it should be, I think it should be shared by the people that are using industrial. Like the brewery is going to be a two-block-long outfit. The big restaurants, they will benefit from the light. They should take part of it. I know you can't take any action today on what I said, but I hope you have some answers for me on the next meeting.
All right. Finn?
Yeah.
Might recommend that you call Public Works, maybe direct you in the direction for it. That would be the starting point, rather than having an open session with you here. But all of the things that are in progress, there are things in progress regarding the lighting.
True. Yeah, I understand. They already spent $50,000 planning. Now, how long time it'll take to plan 18 lights? Okay, it's 1,800 feet, 100 foot per light. I can do that for $2. I already done it, so I'll give it to you for free.
All right. Well, just thought I might help you.
I would suggest talking to Rose Hess, because PG&E is the lighting, but we can't go to bids, because they're our franchisee for streetlights. So Rose Hess can discuss that with you in more detail.
Okay. All right. That's... Is that what they normally call monopoly?
Yeah.
With just one guy doing it? Okay, thank you.
I do not... Now, library.
One more, I think Eva Powers.
Is Eva... Eva didn't write down. Okay. Eva, you're in public comment.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, I'm just here on behalf of San Onofre Botanic Garden and San Onofre Valley Earth Day, just to give you a little update. First of all, thanking you all for your support of San Onofre Valley Earth Day. It is really starting to shape up to be a fantastic event, a free event at that. That is educational, and a lot of good environmentally friendly products will be there, as well as family activities, and even UCSB and Cal Poly is involved this year. So it's all good, and coming along just as it should. And as far as the Visitors Bureau, I'd also like to thank them for the advertisement that they did on the billboard along 101, because that really has helped out. We have had a lot of positive comments on that. And would like to just share with you what's going on in the Botanic Garden as of the last month. We have had volunteer days. It has been very productive. It's looking beautiful down there with lots of wildflowers. This month, in fact, tomorrow, we're starting to shale both the first and the secondary pathways, making them wheelchair accessible throughout the entire garden. And we began the plant sloping, finally, removing all the non-native plants from the shed, tool shed, and towards the west end, and we're now planting all native plants up there that has been either purchased or donated. And we're having some directional signs added there, and some wine barrel trash cans will be down there this month. And just all in all, we're moving forward. And again, I just want to thank you all for all of your support.
Thank you, Eva. We appreciate your hard work.
And just want to add to that, that Marborg's newsletter that's coming out to all city residents is going to promote the Earth Day in May instead of Santa Barbara's.
And which day in May is it for the record? Oh, May 21st. Yeah. May 21st. And the reason for that is because we don't want to compete with Santa Barbara, obviously. They're the king of Earth Days. So as it turned out, we're using the slogan that in San Onofre Valley, it's every day is Earth Day. However, this year, we're not just promoting to San Onofre Valley, we're reaching out to the entire central coast. So we are going to have a lot of people coming in from out of town, people who will be staying here, both participants and visitors. And so, yeah, May 21st is also chosen because of the possibility of El Nino, which unfortunately didn't really pan out, but that's what it is. Good question.
Thank you, Eva. I do not have any other public speaker slips. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Move to the consent calendar, where we would ask for motion to approve items one through six and eight, with seven being continued.
Staff is requesting a continuance on seven. We need to update some of our numbers on the growth compliance report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item one.
Item one, okay. Do you want to move to the six?
I just have a correction. I'll make a motion two through...
Six.
Two through six and eight.
And continuance of seven.
And continuance of seven.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sierra.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Baumann.
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Elevitz.
Aye.
And Mayor Andrewsick.
Aye. Thank you. And item one, please.
Item one. I just had a correction. On page eight, number six, the COLA for the employees to vote, you've got three of the council member, vice mayor, and mayor incorrect. So it's... If you could just fix that, I would move to approve item one.
She's agreed to do that? You want to make the motion?
I just did.
You did a motion, and you're second for item one?
I'll second that.
Okay. Post and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have... Thank you, James. We do not have presentations this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
I'm not aware of any. Public hearings, we have none. Councilmember comment? No?
Don't have one tonight.
Actually, I do tonight. Not since those green striping appeared on Avenue of Flags have I had more comments from people coming to me than after yesterday's traffic enforcement opportunity, we'll call it. I had several people come and were upset about the way that was conducted, in particular things that I think we've probably already heard as calling it a sting operation and et cetera. And some people are frankly not familiar with the laws regarding crossing in a non-marked crosswalk at an intersection. So on one hand, I think it's a good opportunity to make it known to everybody so that we can improve public safety, but I wonder whether or not there's an opportunity to do it more in an informative way and a less costly way for people who are unsure of the situation, and particularly the people that I heard it from, were guests to the community, who were not actually residents here, who vowed never to return. And that's something to consider, I think, when we're doing these sort of things.
Thank you. Any other comments? Well, I was going to actually comment on that, that issue with... And I understand the frustration. I happen to be pulling out of the parking lot here when I saw a person drive right around, a pedestrian. So we were provided with some tips from the chef's department for some tips for drivers and some tips for pedestrians. And I'll just take a few minutes to read through them, because I think it's imperative... You know, I think in the last three weeks, we've had a couple of people killed on 101. That's not a pedestrian thing, but they were pedestrians and they were killed because they were walking in a highway zone. I don't understand the logic, but that is horrible, as is the accidents happening. I think yesterday is a lot less frustrating for everybody than the one... The two incidents we've had in this on 246 in the last year, I believe. So tips for drivers include lookout for pedestrians, especially in hard-to-see conditions such as at night or in bad weather. These are pretty common sense, but it's good to review them. Slow down and be prepared to stop when turning or entering crosswalks where pedestrians are likely to be. Right here's a good place, coming in and out of the post office. Stop at the crosswalk line to give drivers in the other lane an opportunity to see and yield to the pedestrians too or also. Be cautious when backing up. Pedestrians, especially young children, can move across your path. Tips for the pedestrians: Be predictable. Follow the rules of the road, crosswalks or intersections, and obey signs and signals. And I think that's pretty much... I'm going to comment there, I pretty much thought that was like the rule, but it's not. Walk facing the traffic and as far from traffic as possible if there is no sidewalk. Pay attention to the traffic moving around you. This is not a time to be texting or talking on a cellphone. Make eye contact with drivers as they approach. Never assume a driver sees you. Wear bright clothing during the day and reflective materials, or use a flashlight at night. Look left, right, and left before crossing a street. And I think that those are just things that I guess we had to have more review of, and I understand the comments, and we are a tourist destination, but it wouldn't be so flattering to have an ambulance and a crew out there picking up citizens that a visitor ran over. So I do not have any other comments. We have no other council comments. Council items?
I do have a couple.
Cecilia. Mr. Elevitz.
First of all, I know that we will be... We've already picked out the city staff, and probably the mayor has picked out the recipients for the Gail and Norm Williams Scholarship. I would like to perhaps suggest that the two recipients read their essays on what makes a better Beelton, instead of just handing out the award. We used to do it that way, and last year, I don't even think one of the recipients showed up. We just had one.
Right.
And I know it's important to Mr. Williams, Norm, that a little bit...
More attention is...
Yeah, yeah. He's...
Well, I think that... Would you like them to come to the council? I'm not sure. I know there's going to be a meeting on May the 18th at the high school for the presentation, and I was going to go and present the two...
Okay, it's not going to happen here, then.
Well...
It'll be on the 28th. We have them planned for the 28th of April.
For our council meeting.
For our council meeting.
And they're getting the award on the 18th?
Yeah, they'll actually get it from the school on the 18th.
On the 18th, so they will have it in hand.
Of May. Okay, but they'll be presented here.
That's a great suggestion.
I just think it would be...
Yes.
It shows respect to the Williams. I mean, they've been giving this scholarship for years, and it's turned into something like that whether they show up or not, they get their check, and should be more than that.
Well, I was... I shared the frustration that Mr. Williams saw. He was here, and they weren't.
He's talked to me numerous times, yes.
You're not the only one.
The other one is, I do appreciate all the help that I've sat down with Carolyn and with Mark about the CAFR. And, you know, it is confusing. It's comparing apples to oranges, and I'm wondering if there's... I would very much like to get a financial end-of-year report that compares apples to apples. And so I understand where we ended up at the end of the year. If that's... I don't know if we need to bring it back as a council item, or if that's just something that we could do.
I'm sorry. Thank you, council member. Next meeting, we plan to bring the CAFR back, so what I can do is have a... I can present with the CAFR a copy of the financials.
You know, that would be great, because when we set it up July 1st for the next fiscal year, it starts then. We set it up before then. It's really... It makes it a lot easier for me if, at the end of the year, I can look at what we planned on doing and what we ended up doing. And I know that the CAFR is a whole different ballgame and way out of my league, but if I could just compare apples to apples.
Sure. I think I can present what you need.
Thank you.
That'd help everybody.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Leo, had a comment?
Yes. Being part of this season's CERT class, I discussed with our city manager the situation with the emergency trailer. And I live on the east side of the freeway, and I am concerned about access in the event of a major catastrophe for residents on the other side of the freeway, being able to get to the supplies in a timely fashion. So with the consent of the council, I'd like to ask staff to look into what it would entail to set up another trailer on the other side of the city. And that would be strategic location, costs, the kind of personnel that would have to be acquainted and trained to do it.
Possible grants?
That too, yes.
Yeah. But I will come up with the numbers, working with Richard Abrams, my emergency coordinator.
Now, Leo, you're the only one that lives on that side of the freeway?
For now? I don't think so.
No, I agree. I agree with you.
That's easy to come up with, and we can give you a budgetary number for that, and Richard can take a look and see if there's grants available, because there's different things. In the way that the trailers work is, the CERT graduates are the ones who are... Can be in charge of that. So one's stored here at the fire station, but it's a joint solving Beelton trailer, but we can look at one that's just a Beelton trailer on the east side.
And I was just thinking that we're going to have a public park on that side, which would probably be a great place to store it.
We'll see if there's any... We'll look at different options. We could work with the Marriott as well. So there's a variety of options out there that we can take a look at, but we'll definitely take a look at that.
As Leo mentioned, maybe the joint one should be on the other side, and the Beelton one should be on this side. Solving would have the same difficulty getting it.
That's... No, that's a good point. But that's something we can take a look at.
Great. Very good point, yeah.
John, did you have any?
No comments.
Burning issue? Written communications?
None, sir.
Not aware of any. Committee reports?
None.
Uh-oh.
I know.
I think I have one. The Board of Directors met Beelton Visitors Bureau as the representative. I would report that the Highway 246 banner continues to get volleyed. Is that the best way to put it? Gets volleyed across the highway and back. Someday, maybe this year, we will have approval of that, but it hasn't gone away. The kiosk, they're trying to finalize the use of a kiosk for the public art in some areas, a couple of different areas. I think we were specifically talking about establishing... The discussion was about a display, a display to be authorized in the flagged area, the semicircle, in front of Albertson's, between Albertson's and from 246. And I think that has... That's always been a... It's been a very underused public gathering place. To my knowledge, the pancake breakfast is all that... With the fire department is about all I've ever seen go on there, so... They're working on that. The wayfinding signs and the public art locations, that's what we were... I was just talking about. We're talking. And they're continuing to work towards a made-in-Beelton video, which I think is going to be right up there with all the other televised events that people love to watch. I do not have another committee report? Any? Nobody's meeting. It's too early in the year. Okay. Business items. We're at item nine. Discussion of an ad hoc committee with the city of solving for valley-wide library funding. We'll have a staff report, and we have a speaker slip from solving.
All right. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Staff met with the city of solving and the library director from Santa Barbara, along with the county representative, to discuss the issues regarding the libraries. A number of issues were discussed, including the per capita share of the county library funds. As a result of this, when we met, we felt maybe an ad hoc committee might be the best solution between the two cities. At its March 28 meeting, the solving city council established its ad hoc subcommittee, discussed the funding options, and council members Jamison and Skitt were appointed to that ad hoc subcommittee. The solving city council also requested the Beelton City Council establish a similar subcommittee. Up to two council members may be appointed to the subcommittee, and staff would recommend that at least one of them be Councilmember Baumann, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Baumann. I screwed up in this staff report as well. Be appointed, since he represents the city on the library advisory board. Fiscal impact, we don't know at this time until we have these meetings and come to an agreement on what the funding solutions and staffing solutions would be for the two libraries. So staff is recommending the city council create an ad hoc subcommittee to meet with the city of solving ad hoc committee, and that the city council point two members to the subcommittee. to the subcommittee.
All right. We will have the speaker from Solvang, Councilwoman Joanie Jamison, if you would come forward.
I was just telling Ed that I have not been here since we tried to get a sports field across the river at Old Bridge Farm. It's a long time ago. But good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and Buellton residents. My name is Joan Jamison, and I'm on the Solvang City Council, and I am one of the members of the ad hoc committee to investigate library funding. I would encourage you to appoint an ad hoc committee. And in speaking with others, I think it would be better if it was somebody other than the person that sits on the library committee at this point in time, so we have more people involved in it. So, that would be two others, and then you would be involved in it because you are on the county library committee. So, I just think that that might be a better fit for everybody, because we need enough power here in the valley to speak to what the county is trying to do regarding funding for all libraries. They passed a motion, we're not really sure what it said, because they made some changes, but they are, they are trying to provide a method for the various library districts or zones to pass possibly a bond issue to support libraries, because libraries are very, very underfunded. So, that is just my recommendation, my suggestion. I think we need as many warm bodies as possible, and to have him on the county committee, and then two city council people working with us, that just gives us a little bit more oomph. My suggestion. Thank you very much, and I encourage you, please, libraries need it.
Thank you, Joanie. I appreciate that. Steve, I had, I just had a thought, or comment, if three of us were on a issue, could that, seems like that would be, didn't she suggest two other than Dan, and then Dan would have a position as the representative? Doesn't matter, you're still a member of the council, I think.
No, I think the proposal was that there would be two ad hoc committee members.
That's what we thought.
Vice Mayor Baumann is serving separately on another body, so it wouldn't be a conflict there. I mean, we wouldn't have, is your concern that we would have three people on it?
I thought that, that's why I understood what she said.
What I'm seeing, though, as the possible issue, is if you have two other people, and you work with Solvang, and you come up with something, you can't go to Dan to get his input as our library advisory person, because then you would be violating the Brown Act. So, if he's on this advisory committee, he can give you more insight from where the county's committee has been going. Otherwise, you'd have to always come back here to do that review. So, that's why my recommendation is to have Vice Mayor Baumann on it, just because he knows what's going on, and he can relate that to the other councilmen.
In any event, the ad hoc committee can only have two members, right?
Regardless of what title they're carrying.
And of course, regardless of who you appoint, those two members cannot then meet separately with a third council member outside of a meeting. Otherwise, you could create a problem.
It's up to you how you want to form the ad hoc committee.
Then, I think the question I, other question I would have is, what kind of time commitment do you look this to be? Do you have a feeling for it, or does Joanie have a feeling for it? How often you expect to meet, or when they would meet?
Don't know when. We'd get, once we get all the members together or identified, then Brad and I from Solvang would try to arrange a time to get an initial meeting, and possibly with that initial meeting, you'd be able to figure out a timeframe of how often you'd need to meet.
Typically, ad hoc committees meet for a short duration of time, to deal with a specific issue. The longer they meet, the more likely they could be construed as a standing committee, which would then be subject to the Brown Act. So, the way that this is proposed right now, it certainly falls within the category of the ad hoc committee, but Mark and I will keep an eye on it, and we just want to make sure that it doesn't, because it's a gray area of the Brown Act.
For example, 12-month maximums.
If it starts to become a regular thing, then you, then...
We're hoping two to four meetings, maybe, to try to resolve it, and then come to some agreement, then we each go back to our respective councils for any of the recommendations that have come out of the subcommittee.
And now, the membership, I know that was requested, I know I would probably have an interest in doing it, but I, so we have...
I would, too. I mean, if you want to take it, you can. I served on that Landfill Library Board for three years.
Or you, would you like to be interested in saying?
I would be very interested in doing this, but...
Joanie has a comment, not a public comment.
I think that this is going to end up being more than just talking about our two libraries and how we're funded. I think that the Board of Supervisors is looking for guidance and suggestions from individual libraries or library zones, as to how we are going to all get together, at least in our zone, and put an initiative on the ballot.
Okay.
So, that, I don't know if two or four meetings is going to work.
And I'm not, you know, Brad and I never talked about initiatives on the ballot. The main thing...
Was funding.
Well, that was not something that Brad mentioned to me, so that is a totally separate item. I think the key right now is library funding and what the per capita split is, and I think that's the issue, to get another day out of the Buellton Library and a supervisor, what that money's going to be, whether we're going to get the higher per capita, lower per capita, and what the budgetary types of things. The ballot measure is going to be something that's a little ways off, it's not going to be this particular year, so I think another committee could be formed at that time to address that, but I'm, I'm not, Brad and I have never talked about the bond measures at this point.
No, because it was just suggested April 5th by the Board of Supervisors, so we're all kind of going, okay, what are they telling us that they want us to do? But they want, they want input from all of the library districts, so.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you, Joanie. Any, sounds like we have two willing volunteers.
You're the mayor, whatever you say.
Oh, I am, I'm fine with backing you up.
So, with that...
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion. That we have Councilwoman Ciara and Vice Mayor Baumann be our ad hoc committee members until reassigned. All in favor?
We had to have a second. I'll say a second.
I can't say. All right. All in favor, do you want a roll call?
Roll call?
Yeah, do a roll call.
Just two.
All right, Mayor Andrusik.
Aye.
And Councilmember Elevitz.
Aye.
Councilmember Connelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Ciara.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Baumann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'll be in contact with both of you to try to set up some dates with Brad for the meetings.
Thank you. Thank you, Joanie. Agenda item 10, consideration of contract extension with Cosmont Companies for Economic Development Services. Mr. Brzezinski?
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. Cosmont's annual contract expires on June 30th of this year, and we'd like to continue their, the use of Cosmont into the next fiscal year. Their amendment in work plan is included as attachment one. Their work plan includes a little additional work in funding this year, to work on the Avenue of Flags specific plan specifically, and then for next year as well. They've been involved in attracting businesses such as Chipotle and The Habit to the city. They have been, recently been reaching out to Avenue of Flags property owners to assist them in understanding the Avenue of Flags specific plan, and contacting potential developers regarding potential projects following the plan's adoption. Staff believes the relationship with Cosmont has been beneficial to the city and would recommend extension. The funding would be additional $17,500 for this fiscal year as part of the specific plan work, and funds are available in the planning contract services budget, and then $45,000 for the next fiscal year, and that would include specific plan work, as well as any economic development services, reaching out to property owners and advising the city as they've done the last three years. So, staff is recommending that the city council direct the city manager to approve the third amendment to the Cosmont Companies contract, and we're available to answer any questions.
Question I would have on the additional charges, how much preview does that have? Because that, how, the additional cost...
Oh, the 17.5?
We're looking at 17.5 and 45, and then I thought I heard plus if they do additional work.
No, no, no. The 17.5 is for the additional work during this fiscal year. The 45 includes specific plan and any additional economic work we want them to do, so the 45 includes that, so there's nothing above the 45.
Okay, I misunderstood.
And if they do come back, it will come back before the council.
Great.
Such as this amendment for this fiscal year.
Okay. I do not have any speaker slips on this item. Is there anyone that wishes to give another comment? I'm sorry.
I had a question. On the first page, I guess it's page 64, it says, you know, the Cosmont's been involved in attracting businesses such as Chipotle and The Habit. They've recently been reaching out to Avenue of Flags property owners to assist them in understanding specific plan. How, I talked to two property owners, and they haven't heard anything. How are they being contacted?
Well, Mr. Dennehy has been contacted, and Ron Anderson has been contacted regarding some of the other property owners, but they've, but they've, we've reached out and given the names to the property owners, and we want the property owners to get back to us. We don't want to just throw Cosmont at them, but Mr. Dennehy got back to us.
So, Cosmont hasn't been reaching out to the property owners, we're asking the property owners to contact them?
No, contact us to let us know if we can have them reach out to it, but they're available and meeting with property owners as requested to assist them, and they've been doing a performance on properties.
I know Cosmont does a great job. I was just, that seemed kind of vague, and it says that they've contacted potential developers regarding potential projects following the specific plan's adoption.
They've talking to developers at these conferences that they go to, and they have them lined up, that, you know, we're doing this and we're working on this, so they have this little cadre of people that are interested, but they want the specific plan to move forward.
Thank you. It just seemed kind of vague.
No, I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarifying.
I'm done.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mark Elevitz. When will we get another update from Cosmont? And I'm asking specifically because the task force hasn't met for quite a long time, and it seemed like it might be appropriate to have them meet with us again.
That's absolutely, that's a good idea, but they did have, did do an update. I've sent the update to you a couple of weeks ago, and it's on the website. It updated the demographics, et cetera, so they've done that, but...
I've gotten through page 39 so far, yeah.
But that's a good idea, we could bring that forward to the task force to review the updated demographics and things like that, and...
Okay.
And whatever else they need to do. So, we'll try to arrange that in a time when they'll be coming through the area or here for the specific plan workshop, or something to that effect.
Could we get, could the task force get notice in advance, so that maybe we could send some questions to you for Cosmont?
Yes, and you can send me, how about if I send something to the task force asking for questions now? We can send those to Cosmont and just have them ready to go on those.
Okay. That's good.
While you're talking about the demographics, in our animal contract, item four, we talked about the population at 4931. I had asked you a while ago, and you said it's right around the corner. Is this, is that the number that's fallen out?
That's the number from last year, soon, probably 1st of May is when Department of Finance comes out with the new number, and once that comes out, then we'll contact the appropriate person for the street signs.
Do you think there's any way we could find 69 more people, so we can put a five in front of population?
Well, Cosmont, in what he sent out, they're saying 4986.
Then we only got 14.
So, we're only 14.
Okay, only 14.
The number is right.
We'll do our best with the state to see if we can bump up some of those.
Tell us the day you want to do the nose count, and we'll...
Yeah, okay. We'll get some people over flying flags to pretend to be residents.
Okay.
It would just be nice to see the odometer turn over, the peopelometer. All right, with that, do we have any action for...
Mr. Mayor, I move that we direct the city manager to approve the third amendment to the Cosmont Companies contract for fiscal year 2016-17, and to authorize an additional $17,500 for this fiscal year.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
You have a second? Motion a second, please call the room.
Councilmembers Ciara.
Aye.
Councilmember Elevitz.
Aye.
Councilmember Connelly.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Baumann.
Aye.
And Mayor Andrusik.
Aye. With the 5K in there. Agenda item 11, resolution 1604. This is, yep, we'll just take a moment. Good night. Resolution of the Council of City of Buellton, approving certain information for inclusion in the official statement related to Central Coast Water Authority refunding revenue bond series 216A, a state water project. Mrs. Galloway-Cooper?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome.
Yes, the CCWA is refinancing their revenue bonds that finances for the purpose of the state water project, which was originally, the first refinance was in September 2006. So, they called us, they called all the agencies, the member agencies, for a meeting about two, three, three months ago. We met at CCWA and explained that they were, the rates were good, and that they would be, they hadn't locked in, and I don't know when they're locking in, they may have locked in, but this really isn't about that. They do, they do see that the rates are going down, there will be some savings. What this report is, and for all member agencies, is that we have to re-prepare what's called the appendix E. The appendix E is a, is a long series of discussion about the enterprise funds, and the City of Buellton, and all about the water and that kind of thing. It includes actuals, as far as financial information, as well as projections. So, with that, we were asking for the approval within this resolution of this appendix E, which will be included in the official statement, which will go before the Securities and Exchange Commission, but that's, again, CCWA is handling that part. We're also including policies and procedures, which were not in any of the prior refinances, but they do want them in this one. The SEC is getting more strict on that, and so they, they would like to see policies and procedures. And basically, what that is, is that it says that we will disclose all information to the SEC. Basically, we have continuing disclosure, and we're doing that already, but this, this just makes it more official that we have to do that. And so, tonight, we're basically asking you for approval of the appendix E and the continuing disclosure policies and procedures. And if there's any other questions, I'll be happy, happy to answer them.
Well, I think, I would just mention, I think rather than SEC, it's the Bond Council, the people that are going to sell the bonds, they're on the hook, and the SEC then is on the hook if Bond Council has overs...
They're the watchdog and the oversight, that's true.
Right, so it's pretty much driven by the Bond Council, which makes it much easier to sell when Bond Council has a bulletproof agreement for the investors. So, with that, are there any other questions for? I do not have any speaker slips, so...
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Part of this is accepting the refund of the revenue bonds, correct? If the refunding of CCWA 2016 revenue bonds may result in a net present value savings?
What they mean by that, and we don't have any exact numbers, but because the interest rates will go down, then our, our payments, basically, it's like a loan, so we have loan payments that we make every year, so they will go down. I don't know exactly how much they'll go down, but, because I, you know, I can't put my finger on that, and...
No, no, no.
We don't have that information, and anytime we do pay CCWA, they submit an invoice with several pages of backup, which, you know, explains. So, for example, I'll just, looking, then the actual revenue bond payments, the last one was just under $300,000, so it's at 290010, but our full payment, when you add all the other costs in there, to CCWA was $986,111. So, we expect the payment to go down, a little bit.
Do you think they'll reissue another bond, or is this... Do you think they'll reissue another bond, or is this going to be good, or hard to say?
They don't, last time they did this was in 2006, so that's 10 years ago.
Okay.
So, you know, you may expect it again, but it would be for, it won't be for quite a while.
Thank you.
And I think, if I'm not mistaken, they, in the past, when credits have come, like the billing errors that they had that were brought to your attention, they've just automatically given us a 100% credit on our, on our billing. So when we see the statement of charges for monthly, most of the cities have dollar amounts, and we have a bracket, so that's, that's, I think that's been...
Very reputable company.
Yeah, very reputable, and they're close by.
And they're close.
And that's true.
So, anyone else have a question about these bonds? It's for the benefit of the rate payers, which are connection, connection fee payers. So with that, we would look for a motion for resolution 1604.
I'll move to accept resolution 1604. Don't need to read the...
Per staff, thank you.
I'll second it.
I'll move and second it for resolution 1604.
Councilmember Elevitz.
Aye.
Councilmember Connolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Sierra.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Baumann.
Aye.
And Mayor Andrusick.
Aye. Thank you. Actually, we'll help our percent, we have to have that 1.25 rate recovery. We've been at 1.23, but they can't count this money until the bonds are sold, so we might, might actually be higher than that.
Hopefully.
Okay. City managers report.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Public Works Director Hess sent you an email regarding the LED lights. They will be starting to be installed next week, so you'll see the PG&E crews around town putting those in. Staff met with Caltrans on the no parking signs on the west end of town, and sort of came up with brainstorm ideas, but a lot of those will probably entail the city taking over the signs and putting lists in, but we're going to work with the Sheriff's Department on appropriate signage and wording for spacing of the no parking. That, that's the basic, they want to be able, if somebody pulls off, they need to see a sign that it's not parking. They can't be in the middle and see it. That's Caltrans perspective, so there may be larger signs and less of them, and we may be able to work with PG&E to put them on the light poles, so that will eliminate some clutter, because the pole's already there, and we don't have to add additional types of things. Caltrans can't do that with the PG&E poles, but the city can, so we're doing some review and investigation of that, and then we'll send something to Caltrans saying, this is the plan we want to move forward, and then they can say yea or nay, and then we'll come back to council and let you know what we're doing on that. It was very, I thought it was productive, didn't you, Rose? Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's just part of their safety thing that they, they regularly try to do.
Little overkill, but safety.
Yes.
I'm just going to ask, and I can't say if they've gone on, I've missed it, are there no parking signs on the south side of Highway 246 still up all the way down?
Yes, they, and they didn't put the north ones on because we told them, stop until we have a discussion, so they're not going to do anything until we figure out what we're doing.
And again, is there, could you update me, because people ask, why can't they park there?
The width of the shoulder is not large enough to park, so if you pull over there, your car's out in the travel lane.
Okay. Now, if, is that a striping issue when we get to doing striping? Because the center divider is more than wide enough.
Very large, yes.
And I would say, I would, I would think we could re-stripe and let people park from the...
But that is not our road, and Caltrans has complete jurisdiction over those areas of Highway 246, so the striping is as is, and we'd have to go through a whole, if we want to change the lane widths and striping, that's a whole different approach improvement process we'd have to enter into with Caltrans.
Well, they are going to do that at the end of the year.
There's a cap in, but that is to replace as existing. They are not changing the striping.
Right, so maybe between now and then, we could at least start a conversation?
The, the plans and specs are already at 100%, and it's out to the headquarters, state headquarters for approval, so to change those plans and specs at this, I mean, even if we start discussion, that would create a problem with this project moving forward, and we would rather have this project moving forward and get our sidewalks built at this time.
The engineering RFP and the, the exciting nonprofit presentations will be at the next meeting.
Oh.
I will do my usual board thing, so we can move forward through that quickly, hopefully.
Thank you.
The matrix.
And the Riverview Villas Project, the 75 apartments behind Albertson's that Carrie Moriarty is processing have been submitted, and we are processing. I have the plans at my desk, and the full-size plans are in planning, if anybody is interested. There's still the issue of the chlorine facility next to it that we still have concerns over, and we'll be looking very, very, very closely at that as this project moves forward. And the Planning Commission also did a conceptual review of the Commons Project between Hampton Inn and Firestone, which is the public market and wine tasting facility that they're proposing, that they're almost fully leased, and they haven't even gone to Planning Commission to get an approval yet. So it's very, the Planning Commission was very excited about the project, or tweaking the architecture just slightly to make it more Beelton and less Healdsburg and things like that, but very, very favorable response from the Planning Commission, so they're, hopefully, end of this month or beginning of next month, the plans will be submitted for processing. And the Fig Mountain Master Plan also got favorable responses from the Planning Commission, and they will be doing their master plan, development plan, and getting that in, in a month. Changing the western Los Alamos type of architecture to more of agrarian, which is a little more in line with what we, we have here in Beelton. That's my report. If you have any questions?
With regard to the chlorine unit, can that be put into a, a structure and have filtration in it for improvement?
We'll, we can't really talk any about that, but that's, there are a lot of different things...
There are options for construction.
There's different options we're looking at, and we'll have to flesh that out as we move, move forward, because we're more concerned, not necessarily about a slow leak that will get alarms on, but if there's a disaster and they explode, no, you can't respond and stop a tank that's exploded. You can stop a tank that has a slow leak, there's safety things for that, but the catastrophic is what we're really concerned about, so.
Within the fall zones, I suppose. Okay. Thank you. We've got the City of Beelton Successor Agency, formation of the Beelton Redevelopment Agency, possible, possible action. Agenda item 12, letter to the Oversight Board requesting the formal dissolution of the successor agency. Mrs. Cooper, Galloway-Cooper?
Thank you, successor agency. Yes, so the successor agency actually has paid all its debts, and the property, the property that's owned by the successor agency, where the Visitors Bureau is located, now belongs to the city, so basically they disposed of their property. So now what is required is, in order to dissolve the successor agency, is an authorization from the successor agency that we, we will take back to the Oversight Board as required, and we will present it to the Oversight Board and to the Auditor Controller, and as long as we don't owe the Auditor Controller any money, which we don't think we do, then the successor agency will have to approve that letter, or the Oversight Board, sorry, and then we will send that letter to the Department of Finance. And what we'll, what we need from them is a letter from them saying, yes, we see that you may, you may and you shall, if you want to, dissolve. And so at that point, we go back one more time to the Oversight Board, so we have two more meetings at most, and with that second, the second meeting, we need that letter, so we put that letter from the Department of Finance in a, in a formal resolution, and then that ends it. So here we are, and we just need your authority for this letter, and that the city manager will prepare. And that's my report. If you have any questions, let me know.
My, any questions from staff?
Nope.
The only question I had is, does the city have the total control of that, that will be a titled product within the city, or property, piece of property?
The Avenue Flags property?
Yes.
Yes, we have the grant deed recorded that's transferring from successor agency to the City of Beelton, so we fully own it.
And then, so there, because when I was reading all of the boxes you highlighted for us, the red, it almost sounded like you're then to dispose of the property and send things forward, which, I didn't read that, I didn't understand that before.
That's what we did already previously.
Okay, so we don't have to now get rid of this property to satisfy...
No, they actually call it disposing of it, but disposing of it is actually what we did.
They can dispose it to us.
Yeah, so the city now controls that property. So the successor agency will no longer exist at all, and they won't even, they'll remove us from their roles, and they will, as far as they know, we don't exist.
You've completed your function by transferring the property and getting rid of all the debts, so that's in, that's it, so nothing further. City owns the property and...
And now it moves into the same category as the Sheriff's Station and the library and everything.
Yes.
It's at the city's discretion.
Do we need a motion for this, or just, I think we need a motion, don't we?
Yeah.
Yes. Recommendation, resolution 1604.
That was the last resolution. No, just directing...
I'm in the wrong, thank you, Steve.
Okay, I move that we, that as a successor agency member, we authorize the city manager to send a letter requesting the Oversight Board dissolve the successor agency.
Motion and second. You call the roll.
Okay, Agency Member Sierra.
Aye.
Agency Member Gammun.
Aye.
Agency Member Connolly.
Aye.
Agency Member Elevitz.
Aye.
And Agency Member Andrusick.
Aye. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. I think with that, we move to a closed session. We have a comment from our legal advisor.
I'll just read this agenda item. It's number 14, conference with legal counsel for existing litigation under Government Code Section 54956.9A. Terravent Wine Company LLC versus City of Beelton et al., Santa Barbara County, Superior Court Case Number 16CB00839, and Environment in the Public Interest versus City of Beelton et al., Santa Barbara County, Superior Court Case Number 16CB00883. And with that, we can go into closed session.
Okay, all right. We will recess for five minutes while we clear the room and go...